Are you ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I'll second Dave.
Thank you. Been moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Now, I think, uh, I forgot to say that I believe Peggy is remoting in.
Um, well, she hasn't, um, she has not named her iPhone, but I don't see her.
Okay.
On.
She was gonna try, but wasn't sure. Um. Alright, first up is archery feature plans. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. So I'm Wendy Applegate. This is Linda Saldonut for our NASP archery team. Um, so we went to our, or we hosted this, the state tournament in April, I mean, excuse me, March, and our student Chelsea Dormeyer, she qualified for Nationals. So we did go on to Nationals and, um, she ranked, um, her scores were high enough. She went into three D and, um, and the Bullseye. So her score in the Bullseye was high enough to qualify her for Worlds. So now she's going to, she's been training to go on to, uh, Myrtle Beach, South Carolina. She'll be going there June eighth, ninth, and tenth to compete in the Worlds level. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And, um, the other part then is that we, our hopes are to continue with the program and keep building it. So we are in the process of trying to get the program to go on to the next level of sixth grade. So Linda will be at sixth grade teaching that.
Um, so our plan is Michael Harris, who's the other sixth grade teacher at Housel, and I will teach the ten, at least ten necessary hours in our science classes and will integrate physical science and PE, um, within our sixth grade classrooms. And then, um, they will get some time in our building to be able to use the bow and get the initial practice shooting. And then, um, Wendy and I will continue with the after-school program for fourth and fifth graders from Witstran two days a week and sixth graders from Housel two days a week. And our plan is to use the old high school. We're hoping that's all gonna be good to go, that we could either use the gym or the multipurpose room to do that. And that would be from January to March, April maybe, for Nationals.
And we've applied for the use of the facility.
Yeah.
So, and we would be providing our own equipment and just would need a place to keep it stored, you know, in the gym during that time, but we've applied to, uh, rent that out two days a week.
So, so far what I've done is I applied to NASP to get our school, um, registered with the NASP program and we got that reviewed. And then what they send back to us is a proposal that they would grant us, I think, I, you got, I think you got a copy. Um, they would grant, the equip, startup equipment is about thirty-six hundred dollars and the NASP program would grant us about half of that with startup equipment and we would need to fund the other half of it with either school or community dollars. So that's where we're at with that. And then last but not least, um, we've been working with Brian Bailey on, um, a plan to hold the state archery contest here at the high school in March. And so we kind of looked over the high school and went over that with him. And we want to put a bid in to hold that state, um, tournament here. One of the satellite schools, but we'd be the last school, which is the awards and all that kind of thing, like we did this year.
It would be state, not satellite.
Or not satellite, I'm sorry, one of the places that they do the contest and we would be the culminating contest. And that's the middle of March. I don't think I forgot anything.
Do you have any questions? You said sixth grade, but would it be sixth, seventh, and eighth, or just sixth grade at the middle school to start?
So what we're reading in their rules are, is that you have to provide at least ten hours of in-class time. And then it looks like you could include other students who didn't get the in-class time with your after-school program. Um, but we want to start by focusing on the sixth graders.
I have the funding to support the other half of the the equipment. I haven't worked that out with Michael.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Um, another thing, I'm, I'm really grateful for that, Deanna, because we know that, um, through the program at Witstran, we still had to continue to fund getting more equipment. So this will give us a really good start. And then if we need to draw from other sources, then we can do that. Cause the Witstran program, she had to go through the same steps for that program. Um, and then as we went and found that we had more needs for more equipment, then we applied for different, you know, things. And then we had other people that supported us as we went when we had those needs.
We've also drafted a letter to, um, Sportsman's Warehouse in Cabela's, um, asking them for either a donation or in-kind gift. Uh, if we have a list of things that we desire, items we desire, um, it'd probably allow them to, um, you know, identify what they have in surplus or, or even, you know, what they can, what they can offer. One of the potential opportunities there is of course sponsorships. If we have, you know, like little jerseys or something to have Cabela's or whatever on the back or Sportsman's Warehouse. So there's a lot of opportunity, I think, for growing it and for outside, outside, uh, contributions.
We would definitely like to see it grow and would like to have it be a team like that where we had sponsorship. So I appreciate you doing that.
Because it, when it comes to sending, you know, our hope is we have more students than just one that qualify for Nationals and that we can take them, we're gonna need to be able to have more funding somehow to get them there. And sponsorships, like you're talking about, Matt, is a really great way to go about that.
We were gonna, we have a picture of it on our website. And so we're gonna print out a couple photos like that and, um, of course, the letter. And then if there's a list of supplies, the supplies or materials that they could contribute.
Okay. I would like to see, and I've asked about this, are, there is a, we've talked with Amy about the donation, um, part in the website of the school, but it's, it's very difficult. I've had parents trying to ask how to donate, but trying to get into that website that the district offers for a donation, it's really difficult because they have to sign up like they're making a food, like they're doing it for food service or something. And they don't understand that they have to go into it that way. So it's, it's been difficult for some of our friends to try to, or family, uh, family people to try to contribute to this. So I'd like to find some way to.
Were we going to review the? I just dropped, I lost the name.
The, the policy, the policy to expand the donations, you know, because right now we can't use like a funding or some of those.
That's right.
So yes, we are going to, uh, like expand that.
Any other questions?
I know that there's a local business that is looking for groups and with school, especially like youth oriented to fundraise with over the summer. And I'm happy to email or talk with you about that.
That'd be great. We're, we are open to any ideas as you guys hear of stuff along the way. If people pop up and talk about this in particular or some other way. Cause we know that, um, there's some really good archers out there and it's, you know, who knows? Possibilities are endless. And if we can support them moving on, we want to be able to do that. Or like equipment, if I look at like what Witstran has, this initial cost is like, includes eleven bows and I think.
We got ten.
Ten. And now we have at Witstran twenty, how many bows are there at Witstran? Like twenty some boat, twenty-two bows. So we have twice as much because of the need. Had to expand on that. So through, over time as the needs came up.
Well, I think it's a great program. I appreciate you expanding it and pushing it into, you know, the middle school and getting the kids that started there. Uh, can now continue their, the process of it. So, good job. I, thank you.
Well, we really appreciate everybody supporting us and backing us behind it.
You guys hit the bullseye.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, um, next item would be the Prosser High School graduation.
This is just an update. I think we're listening there. Uh, Brian would be here tonight. Uh, but he submitted this, uh, just some dates that you'll want to be aware of. Of course, we wanted to notify you before this went out to the general public. So, um, that's kind of what that schedule looks like. Usually it's great if, you know, we have one or two people there that attend. Um, it's a huge occasion for a lot of our students being first in their family to graduate high school, maybe even go to college. Um, so busy week, but good week.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. And hopefully, uh, graduations is, was, the weather will be as nice as it was last year.
A little bit cooler.
Yeah.
I can't even remember. We got rained on a little bit.
Um, next item is a, this is an agreement between the city of Prosser and Prosser School District, basically an interchange of facilities. Um, this is an basically an older document, but I'd like to revive it. And I think it's important that, you know, that we restart that partnership.
Yes.
And I think. Do we have any questions on the policy or the contract, I should say?
I think it'd be important for both the school district and the city to update their facilities list because we're referring to, I think the old high school with the main gym and the NPR, we need to get those updated, any facilities that the city has, update that list.
I'm special with that. So we can come up with a name for the old high school or will it forever be the old high school? Cause that is what, like an old PHS and all of our documentation, that's how we're separating it, but.
How about original high school?
I know, I just, I don't know. Like is that, I guess, is that the plan gonna be?
Have you ever tried to rename something in Prosser? I don't know. I don't know how that works.
I think it'd be the old PHS for ever.
We actually have to address that with a, from a location perspective with this date.
It's the classic PHS.
Vintage.
Like classic Coke.
Vintage, I like that.
After the, just by your, after all the kids are moved out and, uh, and, uh, the administration's moved in, we probably should rename it the Prosser Administrative, the PSD, the building, PHS offices, something like that. It doesn't have to, or Prosser, uh, Prosser offices.
And then we, we might still call it.
Old Prosser. The name on the sign will be administrative offices.
Maybe that's.
But we'll reference that, you know, the old Prosser High School.
So for contracts like this, we should refer to it as
Yeah, we. Matt did forward an email to Amy and I from Tom Glover, um, interested in doing some of these things, um. I responded to him, but I don't get her back from him, but I'll follow up with him.
Okay. One of the things, I think, just looking at the old one, and I might've missed it, but it didn't see, uh, the use of the pool included in this.
That's a separate contract.
It's a separate contract.
It's.
We did a separate.
Did it? Um, I did miss it.
Well, I was looking for it because I was hoping that we could get the swimming pool contract to the district and the city to agreement earlier than we have the last few years, which has been the night before practice was to begin historically. So I think it would be good if we had that executed by June thirtieth. I think that's, I don't think that's too ambitious. And I think that would alleviate a lot of anxiety.
Why would we need to make it a separate contract? It's just based on, because it's a score.
We pay.
We split with two other districts too.
And so this is just more like mutual use, you know, shared use.
What are the reasons that delayed the agreement? For the pool?
Good question.
Are there issues that change year to year? Or is it the same agreement just being delayed in signing?
My guess is this year, perhaps just the changeover to an athletic director, because I think normally that athletic director is doing that, but I really don't know.
That's, there's, I know in the past, so I wouldn't hear this last year, but in the past, they used family, um, Prosser Family Fitness and the city pools. I don't know if it's availability that becomes an issue or cost, uh, because I use, I think the grabby pool.
It's something that's easy enough to do, but force goes out.
There's a.
I'll have Casey check in about.
Yeah, there's a lot of negotiating that goes on between other districts. Grabby and Sunnyside were using it as well. So trying to connect with them and get square if they're okay with moving forward and if we're okay with moving forward. And then each superintendent has to sign it and their board chair has to sign it. And so, um, it, it's a, and it's a pretty long, long agreement. And of course, everybody's trying, at that, at the end of the summer, everybody's closing down whatever they did for summer athletics and starting up the school year. And so it just comes at a busy, busy time. And there's a lot of kind of moving parts to it. Yeah.
So you want this contract basically kind of come before us before?
I, I think.
Like in a couple of weeks?
I think so. And especially it does have to go to all the school districts, but I don't, I think we have been waiting until like August twentieth to start thinking about it. To have conversations, because it does have to go between the city, the city of Prosser for the use of the pool and the different districts. I don't think it's been an issue with negotiating terms. I think it's been timeliness.
Okay. As far as the contract, maybe like you said, just keep working on, uh, finalizing some details and hopefully get something back to us this summer. Alright, any other questions on the inter-local agreement of the city?
About that.
Okay. Alright, moving on, policy and procedure fourteen hundred, meeting conduct, order of business and quorum. Alright, everybody had a chance to review the.
When, where you comment?
Yes.
Um, I have, I have an email that was forwarded to me from, from Taffia at the city. So there, it sounds like they've already started working on it. And she is going to, she's gonna send the draft to the district sometime this month. And then two Ks each, so it sounds like Casey's already working on it.
For the pool.
Okay, perfect.
That's great.
Thank you.
On the, after the cover sheet, this compare results, this is a new document. Who, how was it prepared? For the policy? I think it's comparing, contrasting the current policy with the proposed policy, but I hadn't.
It does. So it compares, it compares the current policy with the WASTA model policy.
So do we input that data manually or you like pop it into a computer and it pops it up?
Yeah, it was, um, Adobe, Adobe Compare. Um, so it's a program.
Okay.
Any questions regarding the policy?
So I have some.
Yes.
Some questions. So it's kind of, because it's in Mad Libs style right now, stuff that's full in the blink and makes some choices. And I don't know if we want to, probably don't want to go line by line through it. I don't know if it's good for a meeting or, um, we could send in suggestions, like for instance, under regular meetings, we need to put in the date and time we'd like to meet, um, or changing. And then there's a no districts delete the posting requirement. And I, I don't think any of this applies to us. And we should continue to post our meetings. Then there's an option one and an option two. Option one doesn't apply to us as far as I know, that, that could be deleted. Um. And then it goes on, a special meeting, that same information about notice, um, remove that. Then at one point we call the, they call it the district office headquarters, and that was a new term. I didn't know if we have any other policies referring to the district office as headquarters. So like that's a milit, you would know, Amy. I feel that's a military term. And I didn't know if we wanted to keep that or change that. Um, at the bottom of the special meetings, it refers to, at the special meeting, the board is called to deal with an emergency. And I feel like that could go ahead and go under emergency meetings or it's redundant. Um.
Is it in the policy still?
It's still in the policy. And if, uh, a few different times, there's mentions about, um, unlawful to bring in a weapon and it defines a weapon, but it says that it needs to be posted. And I don't think at the new high school, we have, to my knowledge, any information posting, you know, like a gun-free zone, like that we do with the old high school. And I don't know that any of the new, after the remodeling, that's up. But if we're gonna have it in the policy, we do need to have it. It needs to match. It needs to be posted. That, that was my observations of the policy.
I'm gonna be super honest. When I was reading it through this, it was very hard to click through all the
Changes or different words.
The comments. Um, I know when we looked at this a couple of meetings ago, really there was a couple of things that we were looking at changing specifically defining public comment. Uh, so that's actually in a policy and it's, it's there. Um, I, I don't think we really had gotten to meeting change at this point. And the addition of the study session wasn't, those are the three that I had. Um, making sure that the study session stays in policy so it can never be stripped out. Um, I think this is a great opportunity to, to, to discuss things, um, without having a huge agenda like we had last week.
Yeah.
So it just kind of breaks it up for us a little bit. So those were the three main things that, that I wanted to see in this policy. Um, of course, then cleaning up a lot of the language and, um, fitting it to our, our purpose. So.
I think we could just look at the old policy that we have and edit it as needed.
I'm, I'm kind of leaning, because I do think the study session is in our current policy, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe so.
Um, the only addition would be probably updating some language and adding, you know, specifically that we have time for public comment and not leave it open uh, at the discretion, you know, the board president, I guess. So.
We can take a crack at it and draft on it. And, uh, specific to those issues, we can populate it with those changes and, um, highlight them. Then, uh, work with whomever, you know, bounce the draft back to the board and see, see what we still want to kind of finesse in it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Um, item E is the city of Prosser and Prosser School District land use license. Um, y'all had a chance to review this land use basically for the, the shooting range?
Yes.
Um, any questions or concerns? For clarification, one of my questions was, are we getting a fair shake? Or, or is it a fair equity, or is it fair between the city of Prosser and the Prosser Police Department and the school district? Um, you know, our trade is to, uh, to provide gap training to their staff members. Um, and talking through it with the security staff and principals that, you know, we can include a lot of those staff members into current trainings that we're already performing for our staff. Um, for the use of, of the, the shooting range. So I think it looks good to me. Is there? You guys have any questions?
I thought it looked good. And I know that besides RPD, I think other local police stations are using the firing, the, I'm gonna call it the wrong name. Um, the shooting range too. And it's, it's, I think it's kind of the, the place for training to happen at locally at this point.
And it's a great facility.
Yes. It'll be a good agreement between these groups.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Um, let's move, if you're okay, we'll move this to the next, uh, regular meeting for action.
Let me go.
Um, I thought it was twenty twenty-three to three twenty, twenty-seven.
It said that right up, yeah.
Just.
Blank, blank years, commencing January.
Okay.
So did you, did we negotiate years with the city?
I don't, I have no. Maybe we can ask that question. It would be, I would probably, instead of a four-year term, look at a five-year term. Um, and if they're okay with that, maybe we can fill the language in. And then, uh, for the next meeting. We good with that five year?
Yes.
Okay. Um, next item up for discussion is policy and procedure, eleven, twelve, director orientation. Um, we have a few things that have been highlighted, man.
Yeah. So we just made some notes, um, about what's obsolete. Uh, what we're currently revising, uh, like student rights and responsibilities or student discipline. Um, and so those are, those are just some basic, basic things we can strike, uh, whatever you would like to strike. We can add whatever you'd like to add. We had also made some, I think, recommendations at the bottom of things that might be useful on one of them.
I'd like to see it come back, remove the things that are obsolete and then make sure that the poll is consistent. So sure, you know, if anything is available online, I think it would look really good on page. Well, it's forty-nine out of forty-nine on the packet, but, um, director orientation says online. So I think to make it match on the other director orientation page. Or if that's duplicative, get rid of one of them, but say online as well.
Okay.
I would just say, I would, I think it needs more editing before it comes back.
Maybe we can keep working on it and bring it back.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things on there that isn't mentioned that you guys have engaged in is public records training as well.
Oh.
That we've encouraged our board to, I go through that, even, even do it a second time. Um, so yeah, I, I think that.
I think it's required, right?
Yeah, within ninety days of being sworn in.
Yeah, but there, there's also, um, I think uh, we have some newness on the board. And so to reflect on that and say, here's what I would have liked to have had in that experience. Or here are things that I have questions now, but I would have liked to have come back then.
Okay.
But yeah, we can remove some, some of the things that we have down there and then, uh, just start, you know, going through iterations of it until we get to something we like.
Okay. Yeah. If there's anything, Elise, you want to add or Jeannie that, um?
I, I can't remember when I did the, I was open to helping meetings online. It also had a thing attached to it on records and I had that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And I don't know, the only thing I had maybe to this is if, if we're gonna have things online, would it not be prudent to put the website link attached to it?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not very good at finding stuff online. Um, so it'd be nice if we could just. Go to it.
Hot links, yeah.
Yeah. I sense the policies are online, we might as well have the links there as well if that's possible.
That if I'm trying to get away from any website in policies, because then if they change at all, you have to update the policy. But if we had a procedure document or if in the policy it said you would be. Email a copy of it or like, I don't know, something like you'll get a a welcome package or something and that can have a hyperlink or. Have a website or something so that we can update our documents, you know. It doesn't usually change, but if we put it at a different location on the website, it will update that URL. That's the only reason I hesitate.
Okay. Well, then I strike that comment. We can put it in the welcome packet. Okay.
One of the things I have is the staff member job descriptions. Why? I mean, there's so many. And when, I mean, maybe looking at one just to kind of see how they are laid out, but that's when I look at that and I'm like. This is a little fire hosey for me, but I mean. Just take it all and I guess try to absorb it.
I I would just say that some of that isn't bad. Um, as a new director. You, I mean, you guys have people in your ear about like, what does so-and-so even do? And so so sometimes that's good to have those descriptions that you say, I actually have, let me look, well, they're supposed to be doing. Or here's kind of what that job entails, um, that position. So.
Maybe knowing you could ask for if you want a job description, but but there's.
And we update that or working on updating them too, so I guess we'd have to address if we update them, do you want copies? But only if the material different.
You know what might be more beneficial is like an o- like an umbrella would be a like a chain of command like org chart.
Yeah.
Or yeah, there you go, organization chart. Anything else with that one? All right, well, keep moving on is superintendent search. I don't have anything new to report other than we will have a special board meeting tomorrow night. To interview a couple of hiring firms. And they'll present their proposals. And at that point, uh, we can have a discussion on, you know, those proposals and and or not, so. I think it's an opportunity for us to interview them. See what they have to offer and how they can benefit us in in this search. I do think they're. I think eventually we're gonna have to figure out what to do. You know, whether it's find a interim. Or find another solution to get us through. You know, through the next year and on, so. I think we can have that discussion tonight or we can have it tomorrow after we listen to. Some of those firms. And move forward, but we're gonna have to come up with a solution sooner rather than later. So.
Might point out the difference in the meeting time in case people didn't pick up on it.
That is true. Yeah, so our special meeting will be tomorrow, uh, five thirty. Uh, right here in this room. And it's basically just to listen to two hiring firms, Northwest Leadership. And Human Capital Resources, if I'm not. If I pronounced that right, H, I think it's HCA or HCR. Hazard Young and Atia have withdrawn their any proposals, uh, so we're down to just two. Um, they ended up contracting with the district, another district in the same situation, so they they couldn't. They felt a little overreached trying to do two quick. Uh, searches, so, but they'd be happy to do a a permanent search, you know, that would start in the fall.
And we're still gonna per- pursue perhaps. An RFP.
Yes. Yeah, request for proposal, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and. Uh, yeah, hopefully we can get that published and sent out. Sooner rather than later, see what comes back. And. Um, maybe we can clarify the process of an RF- RFP for all of us.
Yeah, so the proposal will have prices on it, so RFQ is basically send me a resume. And send me some references or proposal is here's the scope of the work I can do. Here's the time that I can do it and and here's the money that's attached to it. So they're different. In some cases, you do want both, like. What makes you qualified to do something like this specifically in education? Maybe a firm has done executive searches before, but they don't really connect with education. The second would be, um, how much would this work cost? And so I think that if you're gonna post one of them, probably the request for proposal. Might be more beneficial, so you can say, here's the scope of the work, here's the timeline, here's the money attached to it. Um, you can do your own informal kind of reference checks and background checks on the company you can get online. But you can post both of them. Typically, those go in the Seattle Business Journal uh for a period of time and um we'll see what we get.
Is the expectation that the. The company is giving us a, you know, giving their presentation tomorrow, they are also good then gonna submit as long as.
That's a good question.
It wouldn't be my expectation since they've already submitted a proposal, but I don't.
So because of the sealed bid process and they would have to.
We're not bidding hiring firms. We're interviewing hiring firms. Right?
So I think. Proposal, what's the RFP for then?
For a search consultancy.
And that's what we're interviewing for tomorrow too, right?
The amount of money that we're spending depending on what they come back at, we might have to go through the formal bidding process. And if we do, then we can't accept bids outside of that. So that's what I'm just like, I guess I'm a little nervous, not not quite sure of what tomorrow is versus what the request for proposals are. So if we're just trying to get to know a company, it's like, yeah, we like what you do, will you please submit a bid? And you know, and then we we open it up and that behavior, if we're gonna accept a. Proposal, an official proposal with costs and everything from them tomorrow without having that. Request out there without going through that sort of process, you know, they come back at um thirty thousand. Twenty-five thousand, twenty, I think it's twenty to forty thousand, we might be okay, but if it's coming back seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean, I have, I just don't know where these bits are gonna come back at.
So we have to bid a hiring firm for superintendent?
It fits all for a certain amount of money.
Yeah, she doesn't have a feel for like what it costs, so without.
What is the threshold for bids?
Forty has to still be multiple close, uh, but a sealed bid is.
And then tomorrow, is it just for an interim or is it for interim and superintendent search?
Uh, when I reached out to these companies, I asked them to do both. That would give us the most information to figure out what direction to go. Uh, most of the folks I've talked to, not only with these hiring firms but outside, uh, this is a very tight window. To find candidates, not to say that you can't find a diamond in the rough, but. That's, I guess, that's just all the information I'd forward on, so I I think it'd just be nice to listen what they have to say. Um, if it costs a hundred grand, we ain't doing it.
If we then for an interim though. Wouldn't we? Would we be paying them or they're just getting me this the person that we hired that person?
You're paying them to find somebody, then you're paying somebody to be there.
So you would still hire that person.
Yeah, it's a contract to find a person.
Okay.
So I say we listen to their proposals and go from there.
All right. All right, next up is. Mr. Andy. Facilities, uh, track and tennis court, so I think, you know, I think ideally, the way I would in. The way I would like to move forward is is to start the process of of our facilities, right? We have an opportunity with um with the negotiations with Patterson. To be able to do some of these projects and act and quit talking about it, you know, a- and actually start to act, you know, doing action items. Um, the two things that I I kind of picked on at first were the track. You know, i- if we can't continue to house a a thing that's been here for sixty years, the. Is it?
Rotary invitation.
Rotary invitation, I mean, I I think that's that's a pretty. See. Um, so I think it's, I think it's by only if we start doing something. Um, so I've asked to get, you know, quotes on track and tennis court, at least have a, you know, start this facility process, so Andy.
Good evening, guys. I've got, uh, we'll start with tennis court. Uh, the best bid came in right around a hundred so far. The next one that came back was considerably more, I want to say it was. Like one twenty-eight. And both.
Is that just the one tennis courts by the high school or both?
That's just the one.
The other ones aren't ours.
Yeah.
City owns the ones by the.
Now, with that said, both contractors were convinced that the the base, the asphalt, the everything is junk. We could probably. Band-aid patch it for like. To make it reasonably safe for one more season, but it will not hold. Uh, so that's gonna be a a major rebuild on that one. And then for the track. It was last resurfaced in oh-four, which I was actually surprised to hear. So far, the best bid that came in, which is basically it's the four to six ounce, which is basically what we have right now, they scrape it. Uh, resurface it and then paint all the lines came in about was one sixty-five and change. The same contractor has multiple levels, the next level up, which is the two inch. Um, padded, it's like the minimum for a college track, pretty nice actually for for a high school. Came in at two seventy.
Does that increase durability or is it just cushion?
To be honest, that I couldn't tell you. Uh, they both say that they're about a fifteen to twenty year lifespan, so I'm guessing it's it's just a cushion. No fancy colors, as much as I wanted red and white stripes, it wasn't gonna happen. And then they also put in a third, I asked for a third bid and that was for basically we hand them a padlock for the gate and they demolish everything and start over. And that came in just about six and a half. Um, and that is the good bids, actually. The.
Estimate.
Estimate. Estimates, excuse me, estimates.
And that would be stands, bathroom concessions.
That's just the track.
Oh, just, oh, hey.
That's just resurfacing, that's that's the Jav- uh, javelin, high jump, long jump. There's two runways, what's the other one?
Uh, they're triple jump.
Triple jump and then the track, uh, and ours is a nine lane, it's actually a nice track. Of the companies that were called, only two got back with estimates so far. Um, I was expecting another one, but I've been harassing them. The second one actually starts at three seventy. And that's for, uh, I don't know how many actually ounce it works out to be, but it's it's lightly a step up from the minimum on this one, but it's nowhere near the middle bid. Uh, and then it goes from there to four seventy. And this one was, I think, almost three quarters on the final one. There's a lot.
When when would they be able to do the work?
Uh, what I told them was we were planning for next year's budget. The the company out of Tri-Cities, which is a fairly new company, could probably get in there this year if if we're like on top of it, get them. You know, notified. Uh, Bainon is is a fairly big company, they have uh offices all over the country, but they're out of. I want to say Tacoma. I don't remember, I'd have to find it, but it's it's a west side company and it's much larger. So I don't know what their availability would be.
Has the company out of Tri-Cities done any local schools?
They gave me some names, nothing local. There was like one or two in Oregon. There were a lot of like playground, you know, rubber coated playground scenarios. Obviously with. With this, you'd want to check, you know, references, pictures, talk to the people they did the work for and so on, so that would be part of the legwork. Uh, I think theirs was fifteen to twenty as well. I don't remember, I'd have to.
Lifespan or warranty?
Uh, warranty, that I don't know, actually, I didn't ask warranty, they said the lifespan was. Fifteen to twenty. I'd have to call him back and ask about the warranty.
When you said six and a half, was it six and a half million?
Six and a half.
No, six, six hundred.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I was like.
The highest.
That's why I was like.
Well, I know, I know Grandview was like. Two point one or something for everything they did and that was turf, track, stands, but that's been four years ago. So that's probably, I wouldn't be shocked if it's doubled at this point. I I don't know what turf costs nowadays, that almost kind of scared me. But I mean, if you if you could get the track done. Um, at the two seventy-five range, which is still a pretty decent track. And then drop another million and a half on the turf, then we're just a matter of stands and landscaping away. But I mean, that's it's not cheap, so.
And bathroom, there's some.
And then bathrooms, yeah. And actually, this same company, uh, I talked to, uh, the Sant is their name. Uh, about doing, you know, we have, we have the ramp from for you come in the ticket counter and there's the the mountain climb. So getting getting rid of that and doing from from the gate and I don't, I still don't know if it'd be ADA, because it's still pretty steep, but it'd be way more pleasant. Was having them come in and cut that with an excavator, do ecology blocks and do like an eight foot uh sidewalk up the hill. And he didn't think it seemed to think it would be that big a deal, but I did not get a bid on that yet, so. He took some pictures and did some measurements and that's his, that's all I've heard back.
I think I think it's important to focus just on the track surface and the tennis court has gotten derailed the past few years is that. Yes, the whole stadium does need to be redone at some point. But we have a track that kids are choosing not to do track because they're getting injured on it, we can't host home meets, we're gonna. You know, be at a situation if they don't fix it, are we gonna be able to field the track team?
Now, before we go a whole bunch further, uh, as soon as I got the track bid. Or excuse me, the the tennis court bid I fired off and emailed to Brian Ace. The space between the uh, uh, the old, uh. The new gym at the old high school. And the CTE building has those portables. And those are going away as soon as, as soon as Boys and Girls Club gets in there, they're gonna smash them home to the dome. That space, they had talked about redoing it. Well, if they're gonna do some paving or basketball courts or something. Uh, there's more space there than what our current three tennis courts is anyway, so we could maybe do five a major dip, four, maybe five tennis courts in that space. So my my uh, my email to Brian was, why don't we do a partnership where we split the cost of building? Because the tennis court cost is 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 a is a demo and restart. And if we're gonna demo and start over, why would we put them there anyway? You know, we could find a place at the new school or if we worked out something with the Boys and Girls Club, maybe have four or five courts, split the cost with them. They have a play area fenced for eight months a year and we have new tennis courts for four months a year.
The one hundred thousand, the one twenty-eight is to completely demolish it, not to just resurface. What about at the middle school across the street from the high school for tennis courts?
I'm sure up in that far corner. And that would be, I mean, you're a hop, skip and a jump, we already do soccer right there fifty yards away, so not to mention. Literally across the street is is where we were talking about building this the sports. You know, bathroom, storage area anyway at some point. So that would probably be a solid plan.
That in part, Michael, like where the. Sand volleyball, that right there. And we actually do own that. Land that goes past that that's outside the pin.
That little triangle piece.
Physical education teachers would love that idea.
Tennis court, I bet.
Football. All sorts of stuff up there.
Like I say, if you're gonna, if you're gonna demo them or start over, in fact, that would actually probably make the cost better because you could leave those there. And just leave them as a play area for preschool. You wouldn't even have to, you just take the nets down and maybe put some basketball hoops up.
And in the event it wasn't done in time, it was still like in construction, we'd have something that they could use next spring.
Theoretically, yeah.
Well.
Might even be less expensive without demolishing and hauling it away.
Well, that's that's what I'm saying is is the demo cost of getting rid of the old ones and starting over. Would be saved on moving them anyway. And both both contractors are convinced that what's there is not worth saving. You know, like. You know, like. I could. I could do that, absolutely.
Would it not be? More prudent to actually. Cause if, if we do that, we're gonna wait another month. We're gonna have more convers- i- it's gonna be kinda this.
Yeah.
Ongoing conversation. Would it not be, would it be wiser to put in? Um, and I, or like a bid request or whatever you. Yeah, bid request, and actually have two, like a, a two-pronged bid. One to move the courts over there, one to rebuild these ones over here. In addition, let's get an actual track bid. Um, a- at least where we can make the decision to move forward so that we. If we can get it done this year.
Yeah.
This, that's the only way it's gonna get done, is if we start.
When I, when I had the discussion with these guys, they were all told this is, these are estimates to plan for next year's budget. Now, I'm not saying they can't fit it in, but that was a discussion I had with them.
Well, and part of this is be, you know, the, you know, working with Patterson to.
Absolutely.
You know, to be, ha- you know, it's part of the facilities, right?
But if, if we could save a few bucks on the tennis courts and basically just walk away from those ones. You could do the, the middle, the middle grade track and, and new tennis courts for about the same price as what the base is. On that bid anyway, we're really close.
Here's only the, the thing I would, we should consider on the bid is the replacement of two. Or like a new two, or can there be more? Cause two isn't brilliant.
That's my question.
Two what, two what?
There's only two courts.
Yeah.
At the high school, and can you actually have more like three? There's three at the high school and three at the park, but if there was four, would that, but both parts of this teams be able, I mean, I just.
Well, and that, that was my, that was my conversation with Brian Ace is. The amount of space, it's actually asphalt, I didn't know that.
Asphalt now?
Yeah, uh, the amount of space that they would have when they tear down the old weight room portables and all that. Is larger than the space that we currently have, the current footprint is smaller. So if, if Boys and Girls Club was to, you know, wanna do some kind of partnership. Or it would save us money anyway, save them some money, but there's more space there, so we could do four, maybe even five. Across in that, that whole, you know, fence to parking lot area.
How would we find out? How, like, how many courts do we actually need to, to function?
Uh, depends on how many kids turn out. We had a big tournament this year, so.
For a long time, the girls usually run a double practice.
Yeah.
So they have RC and then the JV, just because of, even when I coached it, we had high numbers.
Okay.
And the boys usually three courts for practice.
So we need at least six.
And is it a moneymaker? Can we have tournaments at that point? Like, if you have six together, can we have tournaments and turn it into something to make money? Or like pick, like pickleball?
Gonna host like a district tournament or anything that.
What if they were to use that some of the ground down, I'm sure you'd find. Nobody really. Just takes extra time.
Gotcha. I think you would.
I think if they, they, I think they'd be able to stay within that distance of the. Fan are closed, it'd be that out, it'd be right field of the softball, softball field.
Is that used?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all of our field.
If you demoed, if you demoed the science wing, you could add more courts. Where the existing courts are, the issue with that is just that that science wing is hot. So it has asbestos and it costs money to bait it, and there are grants out there for that. But, you know, that was another piece that initially was slated in the bond, that we were gonna demo that science wing and then create a boardroom and district office. Um, where the historic portion is.
I think that, I mean, that's, that's an option, I thought it's of course gonna cost us. And anything we do in partnership, not, not to say that it, anything, any partnership, I mean, that's a great idea, but top of the.
I was just thinking out loud.
Well, the good thing is for the bid, there are separate bids, that will go out for the bid for the track. Bits for the tennis courts, we'll ask for option A, B and C, or something, have something, all at once. We'll bring it back and then the board can decide whether we want to. Look at other options for the tennis courts or delay that a little bit, cause there's a little bit more time and then form a track, or just go full force. Cause you stop, you'll have to work with Patterson and all that stuff too, so I think we, I don't, I think we have what we need to be able to move forward without at least requesting those sealed bids.
For the estimates for the track, you said like the first numbers are around like a hundred thousand to a hundred sixty, that was just for the track itself.
So the, the very first one came in at eighty-eight, and then he emailed me back, said, hey, I forgot this special paint, so it was just over a hundred.
For that, is that all the services that's?
Oh, you said track?
Yeah, track.
Oh, sorry.
Cause it jumped up substantially from the first numbers and.
Oh, yeah.
And the, the thickness was the difference, but.
Yeah, the.
Just for the laps themselves and not the like javelin.
No, it's for all of them.
All of them.
Uh, and well, in fact, and then there's another tiny little part of that where the javelin pit has a, a water main leak under it. And so it's like boiling up through the asphalt, so that's gonna have to be cut out and patched. And then from what these guys are saying, well, from what both of them have said, the old school where you have like a thirty-six inch runway for your javelin. Is not the norm anymore. They do, it's like eight feet by a hundred and ten feet or something. So they would want, they would wanna demo the whole thing anyway. Uh, and this, this is literally just resurfacing, this has nothing to do with fixing the leak of the asphalt. So I figured that's actually a pretty small thing. I mean, we could, we could do that in-house, it's not that big a job. But yeah, it.
Just look at the javelins outside.
Yep.
The track facility, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's under the tree right by the front gate where you come in.
The district has the money necessary to probably almost do this without Patterson's contribution if they were to liquidate land. And that's another, that's a whole other conversation. About the fifty-five and a half acres out on this. The property that we're currently on, if you move into the high, the district office on Grant Street, if we move into the high school, that's a new district office. The property across from, um, the pool. Um, in EJ Miller Park, and so. Uh, the board stance was always that it's good to keep some property, because if you, the district expands and you have to go buy property. It's gonna be more expensive than you sold it for, probably. But, um, there's money there, and that money had to be, if you ever liquidate it, has to be spent on capital projects. So, um, with Patterson's contribution, you could really leverage some things, and you don't really have to cut into the coffers too much. But there, there will be some strategic moves that you can consider.
I have a question, with the property on OIE, is it right, we can't build a school on that property because of the runway and FAA?
Yeah.
When they expanded the runway.
Flight pattern, um, that it's a risk and a danger. Um, or at least that's a rumor, I've never seen the paperwork. Uh, but that was one of the first things that Ray did, was he, he was actually really great at purchasing property. Purchase parcels of land here, but yeah, we've heard that, um, we can try and confirm it.
And I also heard that maybe it's just a pool, like, like you could build a school there, but it can't be at this spot, because it's the end of the runway, but it could be over here.
Move it to the north.
Right, right.
I think we should probably find that out.
Yeah, it might just be like a La Bamba rumor, but I don't know.
I know there's heights restrictions for sure, but I, I don't know if it's. They are, should, but we should probably find out.
It's been, it, it might just be folklore, I don't know, but I've been.
Did you say La Bamba?
Because Richie Ball, the plane crashed.
I was gonna ask you to explain that to me.
That's supposedly like where that. Yes, rule that he seriously will pay.
Gotcha.
We could, we just need to ask the bill for building code could tell us if that was the case or not.
All of these amounts are well within the range of being under what Patterson owes us, so. I think we should get our bids and start pursuing.
Is the ideal option to resurface and rebuild the, to like up to standard now?
On the track?
Yeah, so expand the javelin runway, everything is.
Everything else was, was pretty much standard. The javelin was the only thing that's no longer done, done that way. And it's not a deal breaker, it's just, they said, most people don't do it. Uh, both contractors that I've talked with said they think that the asphalt underneath is fine. There's a few cracks, but they're, you know, they're small. So, you know, they, they feel that it's a, a resurfaced scenario. Now, both of them did say that once they, I, I guess you like put some chemical on and they literally take like a skid steer and just scrape it, put it in a dumpster and haul it away. But they both said the same thing, that there is contingencies, that if they open it up and, you know, something's ugly underneath. You know, they, they may have to change things, but so far they've all felt that it was, it was good underneath.
And did we need to get it done before football season? Would the work disrupt?
It's gonna be about a month.
Okay.
Beginning to end.
It, it would have to be done, it would, they would not be able to be doing that during the season. Just cause I'm sure you can't, can't be on it.
Are there weather restrictions that can't do it in the winter?
You know, I didn't even ask about that, it didn't even cross my mind, cause I figured it would be a summer scenario, no matter how we played it. Cause you got spring, spring stuff, you got football, I mean, literally summer's really the only time where they're gonna have a straight month where we can lock the gate and.
So, like July, it seems like that.
Yeah, that would be, that would be best, or, I mean, you, you could do middle July, middle August, but when do we go back, like August tenth or? No, oh, it's like September, huh? Like first week of September?
And then the track is here, so that gives you an extra.
So yeah, July is ideal.
To practice over here anyway.
Yeah.
But we'll, we could do whatever needs to be done to get it done.
I think we could make concessions to make sure that our track facility is adequate for the, you know, I'm sure we could all concede something.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, we could put in the bid requirement that they have to put when their earliest availability is, so that's a point of consideration. So we might have to pay more to get somebody in faster, or, you know, that, but that's something that.
Well, I, I can email them in the morning and find out what their schedule looks like.
We can get started.
What's a minimum? Five days, ten days? A minimum? Okay.
Yeah. And then we have to review them, bring it to the court for consideration, so depending where that falls with work, I need at least, I, I need like a month, but even. That's probably rushing it.
And it's posted in the renter bulletin? We could get it out tomorrow. Is that possible? Have it in the paper Tuesday night?
We really wanna make sure we're very clear about what we're asking them to do and that what we put in the bid. So that, I would say tomorrow would be hard. But next week, probably.
Yeah, we can have it in the next week for the following week, out for two weeks.
And you can call, I mean, you can call the companies you want and say, hey, this is out there, please put in a bid, if this is out there, please put in a bid.
I, I think it's feasible, it can be backed as, and we can.
By mid-June, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we have to have a special meeting, we can do it.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can, and we can do that, since we literally can, we can have like a special session that I say if you want it, to make a decision, and then.
Thanks, thanks, Andy, that's great.
Yeah, I got some others, anybody want them? Other numbers, other things, or just hold off?
These two other projects?
Oh, this is, no, actually, this is, this was just information, this is for the white church. They're tentative to do sixteenth, seventeenth, he just emailed me today, it's a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then that Monday, they'll have the air abatement guy come in and test, so that'll be done in. Yes.
What, what are they, we need to do?
Uh, there was some water damage in the white church in the basement, and when they pulled the carpet up, it ripped some of the tiles, well, they were asbestos tiles. So once they're open, it's game on. So they're coming out, it's, it's like ninety percent insurance, right? Anyway. Yeah, no, I just, I just found out this afternoon, so I'll, I'll, I'll let them know what day they need to be out or cleaned up, or whatever you wanna call it. And that was information, and then I got the alarm bids, do we wanna worry about those another time? Okay. So the, the, the white church, uh, oh, this is the high school. We'll start with the white church, updating the alarm system to be up to code. Uh, walk through with Mansfield and with Kinter Electric. And this is the one that I about fell out of my chair on. So, so the white church to bring it up to code is right at a hundred thousand. That's what I said.
Are you planning on moving the preschool out? Moving the preschool into the.
Yeah. So.
Us using the church, the church or anyone using the church?
Us. Us and kids, what the Boys and Girls Club decides to do at that point is, is their business. And the reason I think that would be incredibly beneficial is because the bid that came back for the old high school to update everything there. Was under a hundred thousand, because there's enough in place that they can re-retrofit, pull some new cable. It actually came in at ninety-one.
We're moving preschool out, I already talked to the teacher, she knows.
Okay.
If we move, move her out into the old high school. We don't have to do anything in the white church, because within a couple of years, they'll be out too.
And then Kinter's part of this actually came in at one sixty, but they didn't separate it for me, so. I'm sure it's probably a fifty-fifty split too. And I think that is all I have that's pertinent at the moment.
Thinking back on what you're saying, so the.
Oh, yeah.
We're now having an issue with the health of the little. I don't have enough funding for both, I don't think, I mean, we might stop some contingency once all these construction projects are done. Um, but I wouldn't wanna obligate us to that until I know.
So.
Sorry, in the timeline, we only have one year left, so until August of next year, um, but do we switch gears and try to repurpose that to helpful? Or can we move forward with OPHF?
But Chiller's been a nightmare for at least two years.
One, one of them was, was rebuilt, uh, new coils and had some stuff. I, I don't know the exact dates on that, I wasn't part of it, obviously. But one, one is in, in reasonable working order, but the problem is, is there's two, and one's trying to do the job for everything. And it's been, it's been like the, the black hole's been starting out at like forty degrees in the morning, and by. You know, just, just these last few days, it's, it's well in the like fifties, sixties by afternoon. So it's, it's functional, I mean, it's, it's getting the job done, but it's just begging to break down.
Andy, is it possible to move, uh, this CTE building's gonna get remodeled and demolished anyways? Moving that one of the chillers that works.
So the one for the CTE, we actually had Apollo there. Monday, because Friday night, there were like eighty degrees in the rooms in the CTE building. And we thought it was because of the breaker tripped on the circuit, the pneumatic system. Well, apparently that wasn't it. So Apollo was there Monday morning, and they ended up putting like two cans of Freon in to get it. And he, he said there's leaks, but it's in the unit upstairs. And if they're gonna be tearing it apart in August. So we, we charged it, he seemed reasonably convinced that it would run through the end of school. And from there on, we'll make a decision, but yeah, it's not healthy either.
Would it be cheaper to repair that one, fully repair that one?
That I couldn't tell you, I, I don't know. I could.
We're gonna have preschools and lots of staff, we're gonna move, move into that old high school and we need to. Dress, fill that with that issue.
Was the cost of it killer?
Actually, they were good, so.
You know, probably, you know, not only a question to ask, what is it repairable? And is it cost effective, but is it sized right to move to the middle school?
I, yeah, I don't know, I, I'll ask those questions.
Be a question, cause if it's not size right, it's gonna be working like a, a horse.
Well, and I don't know how old it is, I mean, I can't imagine, it's gotta be. At least twenty years old at this point.
At the middle school?
No, the one on top, the CTE building.
We might need to get this for those two, just to see where we are, number one, circle.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't worry about the CTE building.
Then I'm sorry, not P K.
They only give us a two for one.
Do we wanna do that before, I mean, if we're throwing bids out all over. Do we wanna do that before, I mean, if we're throwing bids out all over the place, do we wanna do that too?
I think that's a good idea.
I mean, at least we'll have the numbers.
I looked into it a couple of months ago, because we have S R two, we have S R three, so S R two's ending this August, S R three is next year. And this is funding, if we don't use it, we use it. Careful with that, but that was the basic item number, it is eligible for S R.
Though is that.
And we are spending that on curriculum adoption, so.
Is S R two all, is it completely spent?
It's, if we're getting there, we're down to the flat a little bit.
We'll use, um, probably what's left of it and some free for the adoption.
Also the E O A.
So yes, we can, if you're comfortable with that, we can go, I mean, going out for bid, it costs us to publish it, obviously, but other than that, cause it costs us a whole lot. To at least get those official numbers and.
I think we should get those bids as well, I mean.
At least now.
Yeah.
So both the old high school and housing.
You know, to be like having it separated, so for doing just option, like just old PHF, just house of middle school, and then a comp, a combination, like if there is any kinda deal for doing.
Well, I mean, if the crane's already here, the guys are already here, I, it makes sense that it would be a little less. That's all I got, guys.
I know, it's, it's all good, let's get.
It's just full of fun fact.
All right, I'm just glad we're moving forward with, uh, you know, getting some of these projects.
Yeah.
You know, on a schedule potentially, so, um, any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, uh, our next regular board meeting will be next Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, at six P M. right here in the library workroom. Oh, yeah, and special meeting tomorrow at five thirty here to interview hiring firms, with that, we'll adjourn.
Yeah, I agree, I think, I think for tennis tournament too, I think that's the moneymaker.